Motion that we open the NBA meeting for Wednesday, July 20.
Second.
All in favor?
No vote called.
This is great.
No vote called, yeah. This will take advantage. All right, we're open.
You want to do any preliminary businesses first? Well, you can't, but public hearings at 7:15.
What time was it?
It's just 7:15.
Oh, 7:15.
Do correspondence and.
Now, Beth, you said something about we should, we should take action on the planning board. For every girl for best friends.
Do you want to do that now?
Well, 7:15 for public terms.
Well, I can add it to the agenda. Really? So.
Do I have to add that 3.1 or 3.2?
Sounds good. Okay, we'll do that. We had a couple of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of March 30th, 2022.
I will second if I have a discussion. Right with the please. Then they're good.
Oh, really?
I read the one for.
I didn't want to read them again.
For what do you think?
I mean, the June one was, that was good reading.
Yeah, Dylan Carr, yes, that looked good. And then, and then we continued in the same extreme. Now, do we have to take some action on that? Because it was supposed to happen
yesterday.
A while ago.
Think action on. Oh, the second set of minutes that you're talking, have you approved the first? No, there's a motion on the floor. And seconded to approve the minutes of March 30th.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
All right, now the 16 minutes. Motion to approve the June 8th, 2022 minutes.
I will second that as well. This is what your question was.
Right.
Yeah, now.
We continue to September 21st.
Oh, September, okay.
We did that, it was a date served because we had to.
And we've done it for no one day from the AG yet.
We haven't received.
I'm not going to hold my breath on that one.
No, yeah.
That's why, that's why we went 90 days.
All right, all in favor of approving that second for the minutes?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Well, we need to take that out.
If we got the time, all right, let's go for it.
And what are we doing?
This is.
Is in your pockets.
The referral for.
Good salad, sir.
Okay.
That's actually a pretty nice little spot.
It's, yeah. Now, if I remember right, we had approved a permit across Reed at our house.
Right, a couple houses, a couple houses west, yeah.
Sounds like she, that was, we know it's September or.
No, I think this is the real deal.
I, um, you don't remember this.
Is this the one that's.
Down by the harbor.
By the mall.
Yeah.
McDonald's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I was wondering what's.
Little yellow.
That's what's.
One of us across the street next door to.
Yes, because that kept way up there, a sign that popped up, we never did. So that, so she's moving it from there to that.
The one too.
But we, we approved the last one because it was her residence, so it was allowed within the special.
This is an OCB.
So, yeah, that's been dead. One of those things that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those three things in there, yeah, three parcels there were. So she's got a little sketch of the parking and stuff, and that's all site lanes are using.
I have no problem with it.
Anybody have any specific comments they'd like to forward to me?
How many questionnaires will that make it to the town?
You hear this is two.
It's always good to, it's always good to have a competition.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think that's, I think it's a good idea.
So where's the 24, that's where they.
Burlet, what am I going to say? Just no comment or?
No comment.
Yeah, same.
They would have some questions.
Is that just the entrance? Yeah, sure, the 24 right there is, that's where the entrance is. Yeah, it's just a regular drive. Yeah. What's that a problem with?
So is everything cleared back to that angle?
Seven to correspondence, oh no, we added that.
We added the 3.2.
3.2.
All right, well, see that.
Talk about fees?
Well, 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 we're at 1.2, 1.3, 1.4.
Oh, yeah. Notice of zoning board of appeals vacancies.
We have vacancies, I just read this design.
Read this design, yeah. Yeah.
What was he, was he an associate man or was he a full?
Associate, yeah. He was a full for oil.
So who's, who's the full time?
Well.
I'm the only associate, okay.
Should it what, two more though?
Yeah, there's a total of three that's.
What happened to the other, two other guys?
The young guy was there for two meetings, we gave him some, we didn't pass him, disappeared.
Did he design? Was he filling in? He wasn't there. Okay.
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 Right.
What happened?
Yeah, so we, we must kind of longer in and try to participate at some point if he wasn't.
Now we know.
Okay.
Okay, so if you volunteer response forms receiver, you have them. Then there you go. Reorganization to the board. Phil's going to care, I don't, we have to.
I move, we have to do that. I move.
Oh, I wanted us to do that.
I didn't finish.
I, I move that Darren makes the motion.
Do we actually do motions?
Every year I think.
I moved to make Paul the chair. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Except you, Bill.
Well, they shouldn't be the chair anymore.
She should get in the board and book that.
You could barely, barely complete a full sentence.
With that, I'll make a motion to appoint Darren Sedano as vice chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, yes, he's a clerk, man, boy, y'all.
I moved to make Davidson not the clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
That works in there.
I want somebody else.
Your work, your, your decision.
What else do we need?
Um, we all forget. James, the list, this is where's he at?
Check.
Minutes done. 7:15, four minutes.
Check, check. Fees.
Yeah, we can go today, we have four minutes to talk about that.
Okay.
What are we, what are we talking about?
Fees, 3.1?
3.1, discussion review of fees.
Do you have a proposal for that?
There was something.
Unfortunately, that will be able to the next time, we probably will have to have a session meetings, but among here is a, a, there's the kind of coordinator has asked all boards and committees to review fees and regulations. Make the person that they suggested she even did. You know, I don't think, I don't know if you want to do that now, or you want to.
I do have some changes.
I mean, changes that you feel, I know that they haven't been updated in contact time.
No, but didn't we do all of them a couple of years ago?
Well, we did. Want to do this one over again.
I don't, I don't recall. We, we talked about fees, you know.
Yeah.
But we haven't had any for fees come in. And I usually key off of Groton's fee schedule for 40Bs.
We have that ticket.
They're the only people that have won a case.
Can we have a list of all our fees for applications and then maybe do a review of some?
Yeah.
A few times.
I mean. We, we used to try to cover Beth's time, our materials.
Publication costs.
Publication costs, right, but we don't do that anymore. Publication costs are paid directly by the applicants now. Which I think is a much better way to go. But, um, so, you know.
You think our fees are okay then?
I, I, I don't see a big problem with them, but it would be good to.
Just to review, just make, make that decision in front of us.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to know what our administrative costs are. So you have a certain number of hours that's allotted to us, but.
Five hours a week.
Five hours a week. So it's a hundred bucks an hour, right?
All in favor? Maybe if we, if we come up, we can look at that.
Sure, yeah, I mean.
We, we were coming up, we used to do that. Storage.
Oh, that was, no, that was my response to Brian's. But we've got the meeting, the mini meeting that the three of us correspond to the 21st of September.
Yeah, I think the. The thing is to really do a decent job of figuring out what the administrative costs of the board are. Okay, and then, because basically you have to be able to back up your fees.
Yeah.
They take you to court and say, oh, these guys are, you know, arbitrary increase of fees. You want to have a pile of documentation, excuse me, your honor, take a look at this.
This is fresh, you can chose.
And it can be very variable, you know, for this board, like, you know, you had a 4B or you had, you know, a white wall.
But doesn't, the prices are going, do the prices go up for posting in the newspaper though?
Well, the problem with the newspaper is they've got you over a barrel.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
If state law says you have to advertise, so the only place we can go is below the sun now, is that? So, I mean, that's what keeps them in business is legal advertising, and, you know, it's totally obsolete because the internet is way more useful. But you can't.
That's an expensive cost.
This may, it's expensive to put something in the newspaper.
Yeah, my, my nose is before closures. I'm telling them, we're, we're about to come up, $1,000 a week.
I found out how much else put an obituary.
Get the paper and obituary?
Yeah. Like $2,000.
Put it out on TikTok, it's in better shape.
I want to reach more people, I want to reach all my family members.
Yeah, right. Okay. So if you're most into open the hearing for Mr. Lord.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're open. Clerk will read the notice.
In accordance with Mass General laws, chapter 48 and Townsend's own bylaws, the Towns and zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 20th, 2022 at 7:15 in Selectance Changers, 2 Main Street. I apologize. And the application bill, not by law, and revoked with press, Michael Law and Trustee is a special permit under zoning bylaws 145, 65, 145, 27C, item 2, and 145, 18. The applicant is proposing to convert a existing non-conforming commercial building to a multifamily residential unit by constructing four one-bedroom apartments at 256 Main Street, map 51 block, 31 lot, zero. Accordingly, the public may access the meeting via the following Zoom link. Our parties which are speaking is put over in opposition to this application, we do so in like a hearing or running prior to the hearing, probably to this application, I rail with them to you at the Townsend Hall during visits hours, room, category and channel. There you go.
Okay.
Um.
So we've got some.
I have a formality. So I was looking at the, at the things that we posted, the 145, we did 145 dash 65, that is the special permit criteria. The 27C2 is the downtown commercial, I believe, special permit criteria. We're going. Um, there's. Where do I see it? Somewhere I saw 145 dash 20, which is the Aquifer District, but we didn't advertise.
145, 18 on the death.
Okay, and then 145 dash 20 is the Aquifer Protection District, but that's, I didn't see that in the notice, does that matter?
Conservation is bowed out, so, you know, I don't know what.
Well, if that's, if we have to look at the Aquifer criteria and it's not advertised, I just want to make sure that we're okay with it.
It's covered under the general.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good question.
Um. We're nearly, what are your comments? So whenever you apply for a special.
For other votes.
There, right here, a couple pages in, right after the tab.
They're involved.
Two pages.
Over mine.
Yeah.
Merci, beaucoup. All right, so. Uh, when you apply for a special permit in Townsend, we have to refer your application to other boards. So that, you know, we don't have somebody coming in at the last minute saying, oh my God, you forgot about this. So we give them a chance to pipe up, and that's what this is about. So the water department says, um, the water service needs to be upgraded and add a meter to 1.5 inches. If the town requires a fire sprinkler line, it must be six inches. Which, as I understand it from reading the material, you are going to have to sprinkle the film in.
Right.
So you're putting in a six inch water upgrade?
I don't know, the engineer has it now, he's designing it. They're all, the engineers are saying it's a two inch, so. But then the engineers are the ones stamping it, so. I don't know where it came up at six. That's an awful big, that's awful big.
I wonder if it's a typo, but there's a few typos in there, I read it over too.
Oh, okay.
So.
I would actually check that out because.
They've got to comply, so.
That's why.
That's a lot of sprinklers.
Engineer.
Because you have, you need the water department signature on your building for that, so, you know, you need to figure that out. Um, sprinklers, parking will be slightly decreased. Now, I didn't really ever get that you had your, your septic system is in the back, under the parking lot, is that correct?
The tanks are in the, between the two buildings and the.
Yeah, but the leach bit.
Did you do a walkthrough, walk, a visit?
I've been to the building many times.
I, I went. I went too. We're probably going to want to get into that a little bit, why don't just go through, read them all, and then we'll revisit it, and we'll let him adjust.
So the exterior changes for the historic district conditions. The board of health, um, has approved the septic. As of July 26th, 2021, so about a year ago.
Right.
As a condition approval, you have to do a Title V inspection. This must indicate the system is passed and, and has to be submitted to prior to the board of health signing off on any going. Fire department building, we brought up the current code, including the fire suppression system monitored by a fire line control panel. A max box, is that, so they can get in, right? Max box. Yeah. Land use coordinator, that was on there, this, is that like a new deal? The bylaw doesn't say anything about the land use board. The applicant has worked with the land use office in preparing the project. There's no disturbance and utilized existing parking and septic. And goes on to say he believes the proposed use as well of the improvements of the front facade would be beneficial to the purpose down, specifically the downtown area. Uh, Townsend Housing Authority. If approved, we request that the two units on the first 4V55 plus senior housing have good, have stage in place. And accessories, um, this would increase tax revenue with town. Big surprise. And we come up, time to raise, no, no. So do we have a copy of this planning board decision, or are we just?
No, it was Monday night.
Doesn't exist yet?
No. I haven't come live to the hearing.
Which was interrupted by a power failure?
Yeah.
There was a glitch with the electrical system. Something in towns, it wasn't just here.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, middle of the seven o'clock.
Yeah.
All right, so those are the preliminaries, why don't you tell us what you're up to and?
I've got, I think, Tom, that's the same. In, in patient instructions, because Tom's done the work on the deeds in the past, my work, so he'd much better suit the answer portion as well than I am, but I'm looking to change the use of a building from like commercial to, to residential and, um, it, it will, if, you know, the traffic flow of the, because both those companies, their business grew, especially veterinarians um, over the years, so when they bring out 20 to 60 cars a day parking front there in 119, and they're always fighting to get back out and make their way, and then they grew as well in the back parking lot where I got lots of space, I, I could accommodate them, but they grew to, the veterinarian ended up with five, and then the driver had four. And then the driver Ed, with COVID, started doing everything through Zoom, and then he found that, you know, he, he told me over, over a year ago, he said, I'm making, probably not going to need the space there anymore, because I can do this. So he had a little space in Pepper, but he, um, but he doesn't need the big space that we have up there. So when that kicked into play, then I said, well, it's probably a good time to, to do this, and, um, and I started researching it, and first I bought the house because my septic system is relatively new. So I knew that was big enough, and then I worked with, at least, with the stroke district, because I'm there to redo the front facade. We worked, we worked that out well. And then it was just, um, you know, doing the families, working with Beth and Eric and, and Mike to, uh, I don't know if I have the things right as I look forward, but I will, it'll, it'll make it much better for the traffic coming in and out of there, for my tenants and my other building. Because those nine cars, they'd come in and out of the parking all day long, so I'll eliminate that as well, and I, I'm going to make four really nice apartments in the center of town. So there's one.
Four one bedrooms or?
One bed.
Four one bedrooms. Two up, two down?
Correct, yeah.
So is the bed moving out? Is the bed moving out?
That's out, yeah.
Already gone?
Yes.
One, that's the one down there?
That's right, she down there.
Yeah, that was like April.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Please.
So, um, I have some questions about the, um, the building inspector says things have to be brought up to code, I believe, but um, what are we going to do for insulation, for instance?
Yeah.
Because that thing is thermodynamically obsolete.
Yeah, yeah, I've got all 90 plus. We have to get out of it. Or I do a 90 plus. Uh, gas fired furnaces in, in the building. Uh, the floor, first floor will completely be insulated, the, um, I'm going to even insulate between the first and second floor. To do that, I gotta cut strips out, but then they can, if I do that, they can shoot 16 feet either side, so. Once I do that, I mean, it's insulated now, when I do that, those two things, and with the high efficiency furnaces, that building will be pretty tight. And, and I'm getting rid of those windows in the front, because they're, oh, they are single pane.
It's a historical statistic commission, and they've been all over your case for years.
Well, if he did it the right way, if he went and talked to them before, they had to climb all over his ass. Right, because I knew, I knew it was, it had to be done anyway, so. Had to be done, now I have to do it the way they want to, they'd like to see it.
So are you rewiring your building as well?
No, that wiring's all, I've given it up to stuff there. My panel, my circuit breaker panels are all in. Bathrooms are, three of the bathrooms are already in, a lot of that stuff, either, if I didn't do it in the tennis ring here, they would have things. They didn't fix anything, I can tell you that.
You've got, this plan, was this, were you going to do two, something different in the beginning, because this doesn't seem to match? Am I looking at it wrong? Below and upper floor has.
That should be right.
It says bedroom one, bedroom two.
Yeah, he's labeled it as, yeah, bedroom, there's the front, there's, this is unit one, this is unit two.
Oh.
Then unit three, and then unit four.
Gotcha, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Have you considered putting in mini splits for the air conditioning?
I haven't, I, I, I'm going to put, because of the design of the upstairs, the front, which has really high ceilings, there's no way, and they're only one bedrooms, they're not that big, so, um, actually, one window shaker will, will cool them, but the upstairs one, because you can, will have, that'll have a separate ceiling.
What's, what's the square footage of all, they're pretty much all the same?
They're all about the same, they're all around, they're relatively big, they're all around 700 square feet. Makes 750. But, um.
So one thing I noticed from the site visit was, um, and I, I didn't, so this is a one lot, both buildings are on the one lot.
One D, yes.
One D. Okay, so even though it's one D, are they separate tracks or are they one track?
Originally, but you're going back, um, 100 years ago.
Here's the first, here's the first thing that I thought of when I went there, is I said, okay, I'm going in this driveway to get around the back, and if they're two separate lots, my question, if they were able to be sold separately, what happens? Do you, are you causing a problem down the road with no easement or something to get?
I mean, as a practical man, there's no park, I mean, you can see the lot line with.
So that is.
That's it, there could be no separate, no access, and no parking.
Well, because like, what if, what if you sold this building here to someone else, right, and you kept that one?
I thought they would buy it because they had no septic system.
Um, the septic system doesn't do, does it?
That's both properties. The lot was.
Title V, we can't do that. One septic system for two lots.
What's in that other building, the small one?
They have no choice.
To go out.
The building itself is a lot.
In the back level.
Did you look at that?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you've thought of everything, so there aren't unintended consequences down the road where all of a sudden, you're allowed to do this, we need housing, right? And down the line, there's a problem if you were to sell one, not the other, but I guess you can't sell.
Right, because the veterinarian wanted to buy, if you wanted to buy, we would open, I don't know how you.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this is the building.
She'd have to buy the whole.
That's the building. That's the house next door.
For the septic system. So the floor is. Long time ago.
Both buildings are going into one septic.
It's a Sherwood.
So the, the D, it's two septic fees?
One D.
No, it's one D, this one. Uh, because about 100 years ago, the owner, we had both the bills, did sell it off, so we did a description. And this is a copy of the D, if you wanted to look at it, so if you look at the D, somebody acquired them together at one point, and they're doing the whole guy. Yeah, but that's the history.
So you didn't, you didn't?
I listed, so, yes, I've looked at the titles. Well, I can tell you, I mean, I can, I have, I've got the D for the original.
You did.
Not anymore, you can do it all online, I don't go to, even the online books? Yes.
Yes. Now, there's, uh.
I searched my house back to eighteen sixty-five and I know. I know who sold it, but I can't figure out where he, where he got it from.
Uh, so this was split in nineteen seventeen, at least that's where we went back to. Wants a reservation of, uh, right away. Charles Hildrift to Timothy Larry. For, uh, the right to boss the big apostle's leaning to get access to.
So there was, uh, one of the, um. Mandatory referrals was from the housing people wanting to go fifty-five plus on the first, the ground for apartments. Is that? Are you available for that?
Well, I, I told them I would check into it, and which I have, and, uh. They tell me it makes that no sense. I mean, to do that, because it's, they only have four units. They want the two on the first floor to be affordable, but usually in the cases that they do them, it's when they, there's, uh. They get more density and and then they get that and.
No, they're talking about fifty-five.
Yeah, they want an affordable specific. Oh, fifty-five doesn't have to be affordable. It's just not as amazing. Yeah, and I told them I would check into it, but they, when I talked to Jody. Once this morning and twice yesterday. And she was waiting for. Some, some gal was supposed to get back to her, but I hadn't gotten back to her, but they were saying.
What's the point of?
They were saying, she said it didn't make, she said it didn't make any sense to her. Um, it's got to be another place to get and, uh, and. Because I usually get towns and people, because I don't advertise, when I have a, a unit, well. I try not to advertise, I never do. Outside because I can always rent them because local people stay. If they come, if they come just because the rents are cheaper, you're, they're going to leave in two years. But I have tenants that have been with me for twenty, and they're not going anywhere. And I have people that would already want to come in here, that are townspeople, um.
I, I think the market should dictate, you know, I, I wouldn't want to put a restriction like that on a building like this. I don't see the point.
Yeah, and we talked about it, Beth and I and Mike, and I would, I told them I would check in, but, uh, it didn't. Most, it doesn't seem to. To work, let itself to.
So, um, would you be able to produce any kind of calculations that would show the energy use for these apartments?
Kind of, I mean, that's, that's what I did for a living for thirty-two years, so.
Okay.
I was in natural gas industries.
Okay.
Doctor energy, yeah, so.
That'd be cool for them, really. Well, I'd really like to know, you know.
It won't be, it won't be much. You know.
That's perfect, because the, the problem is, well, you remember the, the, um. What do you call it? The forty B over on Turnpike Road? Uh, they originally came in and said, oh, we're going to use propane for heat.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, he did.
He did?
Yeah.
Because he said he would never get invited back to dinner.
Yeah, right, right, right. That's right.
Kidding.
Yeah, well, he said, no, you're giving us natural gas and it's there, and it's a lot cheaper than propane. And what? They went along with it. So, I mean, that, that's, um, that's, I think that's a consideration that, that we.
Because I can tell you.
Start to look at.
Just so you. It blew my mind, because we did the calculations. And the furnaces that are going to go in there. Still blows my mind. Furnaces that go in there. Thirty-five thousand BTUs each.
Uh-huh.
Each, that's all that there are. So we're going to heat that whole building with, with, uh, eighty, a hundred, hundred, hundred and fifty thousand roughly BTUs. That's input. So output, you're going to be a little over twenty-five thousand BTUs is going to, and they, they guarantee it's going to heat it. So. At twenty-five thousand BTUs, uh, and a hundred thousand BTUs to a, to a therm. You gotta run four hours just to burn a therm. So. It's amazing where they've come today with, with the equipment, the efficiency, and if you help it, now they're all, going to be all the windows still. And most of the perimeter windows are new, but all the big windows, with the big heat losses, is going to be, uh. It's going to be all, you know, up, up to standards.
Have you settled on manufacturer of the heating system?
Uh, yeah, the Bryant's.
Bryant's?
Yeah. The Bryant's.
So is it, is it a hot air system?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So they just, you know, their exhaust temperature's like, uh. Hundred and twenty degrees. No more of this.
I did, I, I have a house in Maine, I put a Renai in there.
Yeah, same, but.
Yeah. You can put your hand in front of the exhaust.
Yeah, and so, and now they come out, now they come out with the double.
Yeah.
You know, an intake and an, and exhaust. And they go off the building for snow. They'll go off the building maybe four feet. And, um.
Are you ducted inside, inside the apartment themselves? It's just every one input?
It'll be all ducted, yeah, all ducted. So I'll get, with two returns, not one, I'll put two returns in each unit. So you get a nice even flow of air. And then, like I said, not that big, so one register in each room. And with the insulation that I'm putting in there. I mean, insulating all the inside walls. So it'll be, it'll be nice and quiet between the units.
I was going to ask the insulation, you clean the floors, is there going to be sound insulation as well as heat?
It's going to be, yes. Yeah, and it's going to be, because. I mean, the thing is built like a battleship and, and, uh. The first floor, there's three, the floors that are out there from the first floor, there's, it's three one inch and then.
Was it in a machine shop or something?
It was a haberdashery originally.
Oh.
That, that, it was, it was a haberdashery and then, um, and the service, the president and barrel, the barrel mill. Many.
Pressure was a main bike.
It was, and I still got it. Yeah, I got the, uh, Fairbanks scale. It's still, it's in the basement. I'm sorry. I saw it yesterday, Doug, where I'm cleaning all, oh, there's some neat stuff in there. But, uh. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be efficient, because if they're not today. You, you can't, you're not going to hold a tent with the cost of energy today.
Yeah.
They're gone. So, you know, you, you're, you're better off spending, if it costs you an extra thousand dollars a unit. You're crazy not to spend it. You said you're going to use propane?
Natural gas.
Natural, yeah.
Hung up on propane, Dave? You hung up on propane?
No, I put propane in main.
In main, yeah.
Yeah, well, there's some places, there's no other.
Well, it's your next, it's your next.
Although I like in the mini splits.
I have minis at home, really nice.
Yeah, the mini splits, the mini splits, yes. On the cold weather.
Until you get to.
Exactly.
It's all twenty-two and a half.
Yeah, a little man you might have a whole couple, that's a man.
Right. All right. Any other? Questions? Any questions? We've got the pre-existing. Non-conforming thing to go through.
Did you want to get commentary from Alice?
Who? We have, you have a visitor here?
Um, Struthers. I'll start and.
Oh, Lisa.
At least, I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Sure, why not? I will do this. Alicia, do you want to, uh, participate?
You did? Yeah. She's got her on you, so. You can.
Yeah, we can undo it.
I can undo it.
Yeah, then she's got it.
There you go.
Hello.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, guys. I just, I, I'm just here in case you had any questions. Directed towards the HTC.
I don't have anything specific.
Are you guys satisfied with what's going on with the, with the applicant?
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, Mr. Lorden was actually. One of the most pleasurable applicants we've worked with. He's, uh, done it, everything by the book, and it's going to be beautiful.
Nice.
Great.
He has, he does hold a, uh, an approved COA, um. Everything will be, um, period appropriate.
Nice.
As our full support.
Which period are you choosing?
What have you told me to?
Given the age of the building.
Yeah, it was more facade, but, um, it was very well researched, um. To fit in with the community. And with the. Buildings on either side and, uh, worked out real well.
That'd be a nice change to fit right in better. It just turns out like a soft ball. Do we know when that, that rectangle got put on?
The what?
Do we know when the rectangle was put on? For the guard there, yes.
Oh, it's good. Oh, I'm guessing. Okay, you're starting this. I've got the original, you couldn't afford to put it on there now. They had the original building, the original building was only. Twenty feet long. It was a, it was a barber shop on one side. It was a, a carber on the other side. It was very small, and they added about fifteen feet on the front of it to bring it up to the main road, and they added the rest off the back. It was very, very small building back on the first one, yeah. And again, like Tom said, it came off, came off the two fifty-two.
Mm-hmm.
The other one.
We do first. Is it sixty-five? I don't know where it's, uh, it would be, uh. And so the, the three violation sections is one forty-five, sixty-five. One forty-five, twenty-seven C. So, that's two. And then one forty-five, eighteen.
Eighteen, extensions, operations, special permit required. So that's the pre-existing. The pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, or changed or rebuilt only by special permit from the zoning board of appeals and subject to the provisions of. One forty-five, sixty-five X. Any such rebuilding, change, extension, or alteration shall not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Exempted from the requirements for a special permit of the following. Single-family or two-family residential structure. Interior alterations. Or reconstruction or str- structure damage by fire. So basically, we have to find that the proposed use will not have. What is it? Sorry, I mean.
Adverse effects, over balance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. But don't we want to go through the criteria first so we can find that out?
Yeah. That's on.
So, and we're here because the DCD district allows by special permit, one to six dwelling units within a structure existing on the lot for which. Building permit had been issued as of January nineteen eighty-nine. Proficient, provided sufficient off-street parking is available on site, which is a planning good thing.
I don't think we, we have to take that into consideration. We're, we're basically.
Yeah.
Forty-five, sixty-five and.
Because the parking centers are the planning boards, so that, that covers.
I think what we need to do is the, um, one forty-five, sixty-five, the conditions A to G, and we go back to seven, you know, eighteen and then. The promotion.
Sounds good, David.
Well, he's my best, were you Eastwood Peak? Do you, you that Mickey?
That's me, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, my sister's Diane Chanel.
Oh. I, uh, I sang with them last night because they did a thing over. Yeah. At the town field in town.
Yeah, so I, guys, when I was in high school.
Yeah.
Back in the seventies, we used to go see the Eastwood Peak on, on flatbed trucks in the middle of the woods in Duxford.
Yeah.
You should do a semi-formos.
That's right. We did a lot of music back then.
I, I rode in for the Eastwood Peak for a while when I was.
Did you? Nobody, nobody, you were telling me that. Everybody knows Eastwood Peak. We had them.
Do you guys have a name now?
We have. I, I just play solo now.
Oh, you do?
And I'm in Florida a lot, so I, I play in Florida. I play. I'm on Cape Cod all this weekend, but I play about a hundred and fifty gigs a year now. I thought I was retired. But I had Dean come out and sign up, because Dean had a bad stroke a couple of years ago, a year and a half.
And he came back, wouldn't?
He got, yeah, he got, it felt, it felt him hard.
Right, he, he came back strong.
He did. He wasn't going to, they tried, he said, Mickey, if I can't sing, I can't, I'm, I'm going to have a practice, I can't do it, I'm looking. He, he did fine. He was, you know, so happy. All right, so.
Right.
All right.
Hey.
Adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. Perfect. Yeah, suitability of the site for the proposed use.
You know, I hate to lose commercial space, because we, but what are you going to do with it? It's so obsolete.
I know, but.
You know.
You're creating four residential.
We need housing really bad, but. Um, but who need, nobody needs office space anymore.
Well, everybody whines about commercial space, but apparently you can't sell it, so.
So.
Yeah, upstairs, I mean, I had to rent the downstairs.
I think the units are the highest and best use of the property right now.
Twenty years.
Who cares? Looking at the, um, set, America's with the suppose, do you have to put an elevator in there?
Uh, no.
I don't think you have enough units.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, impact on traffic flow and safety.
It's going to be better, yeah.
Less traffic than the previous use. Um, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and distance.
Big improvement.
Even the historic district commission is happy. Whoa. Adequacy of meth, of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage.
There's no changes to the lot. And they have to comply with board to help.
Where does, where does the water go on this lot? To the back?
It just.
It's all pretty.
Yeah, it gets pretty, really flat. Yeah, I don't get any.
Yeah.
Because they did, what did they do, Beth? Mike did the stormwater, no, no.
Oh, that's termination, uh.
Termination. Because I don't, it doesn't go anywhere.
Really big lot, yeah.
I don't, I mean, the state would be pissed if it was coming out on the.
Oh, they ever.
Well, I think we would have heard about that, but, you know. All right, um, and source of water, so you're, you, you're going to deal with the. Water department on that size of that six-inch sprinkler line.
Yeah. Main, the top, the main up is on ten inch.
He's king of water lines over there.
Really going to tap you for more water for townspeople. They'll say, you've got the bigger. Adequacy of utilities and only public services. I don't see any big change there. Impact on brown and surface water quality and your environment and natural resources.
Maybe it's a bit of a non-existent. You know, changing any of the structure.
Just put some kind of restriction in the lease that you won't change your car oil and the parking lot. Something like that.
Better than, yeah.
So I move that the proposed use will not have adverse effects and over balance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. In view, did I already say in view of the particular characteristics of the site?
Just a second.
Okay, anybody have anything to say or? Okay.
I think this is going to be great for the town, especially downtown, which looks a little rare and.
Your pick. Now, do I have to pull the members on this one?
You could do all those in favor.
I'll pay you.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay, unanimous motion carries.
And then, so that, that one, but us, so now we just have to do the motion to.
Just motion to grant.
Yeah.
There's no other motions?
I think so. The one, one forty-five eighteen, it's just, it just talks about. It's subject to one forty-five.
Do you have, you can believe the numbers here or not?
We, I think we've handled one forty-five eighteen.
Yeah, I think we have.
So the other one is?
It's just a regular one.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then you're going to be asked on it. On one forty-five eighteen, you would like it in the record that the board is. Finds that this project is in favor, um, it isn't, the project is on compliance. Under one forty-five H and V. Which is interior alteration of an existing structure which does not change the nature of, nor increase the intensity of a non-conforming use. Is that be correct?
Yeah. But we have a.
No, I, I don't think we want to go there because, uh, it is a change. It's a special permit that's required for the. Change to apartments from commercial. So. It is changing the nature of them.
I think this just sends them to the. It's already covered by the. It's already covered by the.
Well, these are exceptions to the, to the requirement that we have to make a section six time.
Yeah, I don't think it.
It's not an exception.
Alright, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit filed for by Lorden Vocal Trust. Uh, with Michael Lorden as trustee, the special permit, there's only bylaws one forty-five hyphen sixty-five, one forty-five dash twenty-seven C. Chances two and one forty-five. For the um, um, for the conversion of a commercial going to a multi-family residential use, by construction. There, one bedroom economics. I'm not done yet, at two fifty-six Main Street, um, in accordance with the submitted plans.
Well, then I'll second.
Okay, anything else to be said? Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Good, we're good, motion carrying. So we have um, we have fourteen days to file our decision. We got a copy in the mail that shows the town clerk's stamp of the day of filing. That starts a twenty-day appeal period. At the end of the appeal period, you can go to the town clerk, and she will write a letter for you saying that no appeals have been filed. Cause if anybody appeals, they go to court, but they have to copy the town clerk, so she knows if an appeal has been filed. And um, so you take that and you have to record this permit and middle sex out, right, you put a deed. They charge so much money for it, that they give you a receipt almost immediately. So you take that evidence of recording, plus the letter from the town clerk to the building inspector and.
And I can get it from here.
Well, you can start the process, they have a thirty-day uh. Rat race that they'll put you through, where all the, all the boards have to sign off and all this sort of thing. You've done a lot of the preliminary work, but they're still gonna nail you for the thirty days and stuff.
What's your timeline for this, after you get the permit, please?
I'd like to have, well. All right, nothing, nothing to special order, and there are lots of things that were, that weren't right there anyways, that I have to do anyways. Heating systems are gone, and they're converted from oil to natural gas, so that's all, just, I've got all those permits.
Now, you're not going to dinner.
Right, thirty-two years in the half of the ass, isn't it? So uh, but, so those type of things I can do. I had to put a roof on, I think this was the time, no one's in the building, Billy Freeman put that roof on.
Oh my.
Billy, maybe, maybe, all thirty, if not forty years ago. It's held up pretty good, so I, you know, I.
It's probably worth re-roofing it.
I did, yeah, I did it, while they're out, like, and come in, keep it up.
You have to put solar panels on it?
You're scared, no, no, I'm not planning on that. I uh. There's a lot to do, I mean, I'd like to have, realistically, have people in there for November. Which is, if you don't get them before November, they might as well wait till spring, but so, if we uh, like I said, there's not. Bathrooms are already there, electrical, mostly electrical's already there, there's not a lot to do inside carpet and uh, showers, I have the showers and. Heating systems are there, water heaters are there, I just gotta get them out and put moves in. So is, uh, windows, once I do what, what Lisa wanted, once I get all that front done. And I, I assume I can just go see uh, Eric for that, you know, but that's stuff I would do anyways, so. So I can get that, that stuff going, but uh, yeah, all the other stuff before anybody can move in. November would be great, I think it's, I think it's realistic, do you ever had talk, and um, people who want the apartments? Well, you know, uh, do you know, um, you know Jeff Pelletier and uh, his dad, John, was, those wiring spec? They rent from, from me and air, and they rented from me and Townsend before, and they're in air. And uh, and Debbie Prophet, and they'd love to come back, Townsend, there you go, and uh. But it, once they, people know that something's going on like that, they'll.
You're gonna have a mess.
Because people are gonna wanna, they're a couple in Townsend, and it'll be exactly what I want, and they'll stay there. I can plan this with my dog, it's sad, she's been doing, she's a physical therapist, but she's. I don't have that name, so if you can do that, it's my help. That's my plan.
Well, if it works out the way you want it to. Well, if it'll uh, just let somebody moving pieces.
It'll be nice. I'm, I'm excited about it.
Just have two more things.
Oh, we do? Yeah, take your day off.
Notices from Townsend slash other town.
Oh, in the electronic folder, I didn't print it out, so.
Anything for us to take out, John?
Uh, resignation from Craig.
Beth and Mike and Eric were really good, they didn't, they just told me what I had to do, but I was just. I didn't have to waddle through it, cause I, I'd have never made it, yeah, they will always say install, actually.
We'll be finished, yeah.
I'll look at it when I get home, on my electronic model. But other than that, motion to adjourn.
Someone done?
All in favor?